In just a moment, I'm gonna open our meeting with a prayer. Afterwards, we'll enter into our public comment time period. So if you would bow with me. Our gracious Father in heaven, we indeed are thankful for your manifold blessings of life, for your presence to be with us as we deliberate, for your presence to be with us and inspire us. We do thank you, Father, for the protection we get and for this country that we live in and the privileges that we are granted. We recognize, Father, that we get our energy from you and our guidance of our thoughts from you, and we pray to your spirit to be with us as we deliberate this evening. Jesus name, amen. We are in a time where citizens could make a comment, and the way that happens is if they email us that comment, we'll read it, and then most likely those things are not something that we can respond to because of this time in the meeting. But Letty, do we have any comments that anybody has sent us?
No, the only comment that was received was from Irma Thomas, and I believe you will recognize her later on in the meeting.
Yes, okay, very good. All right, so we have been through a period in our town and in society that has affected all of our lives, something that we may talk about for many years to come. I wanted to begin by thanking everyone in town and on council who expressed their condolences and their concerns about Linda and I when we were in the hospital and about the loss of our son. It has meant a lot to see that outpouring of support and spirit and care for us as we were in the hospital and recovered from COVID and as we mourn the loss of our son. So I wanted to just thank everyone who has been there for us in this period of time.
Mayor.
So as we began, I kinda wanted to set the stage to be slightly different. This is something that I found 15 minutes ago and sent to Mike and said, "Mike, can you show this?" So I think Mike's gonna queue that up, and everybody will see this little presentation. Go ahead, Mike. Mike, we're getting no audio. There we go.
I don't see the video coming across at all.
I see. Mike, the slide you showed's fine for me. Maybe it's gonna work.
Locked up online.
Mayor, I just received an email from Linda, but I'd like to read the discretion.
Okay, Mike, is this stuff somehow? Or is it gonna do that?
I'm sorry. Can you see and hear it? Cause it's coming through on this side.
No, it's not playing. It's a still screen.
Yeah, it's locked up at the 14-second mark online.
Yeah, likewise of mine. It's playing on Facebook.
Let's just abort that. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Thanks for trying, Mike. Sorry I didn't get it. So Letty, you have the floor.
Yes, so I received an email from Linda Sanders, and I'd like to read that to you now. Dear people, Nick and I wanted to thank you for your kind floral remembrance during this difficult time. The arrangement was striking and greatly appreciated. It has exactly been two weeks today that we lost weight to this insidious disease, and we are both trying to get our footing. Thank you again for reaching out. It means so much to us, Linda and Nick.
Thank you, Letty. All right, we are on our announcements and reports section. If I have messed up something, and my mayor pro tem, I'm sure will correct me if I'm bad, won't you?
I'll try. I'll try.
Okay. Item number one, receive town manager Norwood's update and provide input regarding the following COVID-19 update. Steve Yehud floor.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'm glad to see you back in the meeting and running the meeting, so welcome back. You know, big news this week, the governor had a big press conference yesterday afternoon at 2:30 to kind of unveil the opening of Texas. And you know, it doesn't answer all of our questions. We're getting questions from residents and businesses on what some of these things mean. But I would encourage residents and businesses to go to our website at trophyclub.org. We have a link on the website that directs you to the 60-page Open for Texas, which outlines kind of the do's and don'ts and the thoughts behind that. But what we do know is the governor's ration expires April 30th. He has come out and stated that there is a May 1, we'll start a new process of opening Texas. And that's gonna be opening for libraries, museums, movie theaters, restaurants, retail malls, what have you, with the caveat that the limit is 25% of your occupancy. So you know, that will create some challenges, that will definitely create some different business operations for many, including, I mean, all of them. You know, the museums and libraries, you can't have anything interactive where the kids or adults, what have you, are touching things. You know, as far as if you've been to the Presidential Museum, George Bush there at SMU, there's a lot of interactive things that, you know, kids enjoy, but those will not be allowed to be part of that. Part of the plan is also if in two weeks, come roughly May 18th, if there hasn't been an increase in the number of COVID-related cases, then the next step would be Phase 2, which would open up barber shops, bowling alleys, gyms, massage parlors, salons, and video arcades. And it would also allow those in Phase 1 to increase to 50% occupancy. Now, I've heard, and I'm sure you've heard, a lot of restaurants and others saying that the 25% in Phase 1 is impossible to achieve. Some are gonna be opening, some are excited, others are saying we're not going to open on Friday. Cinemark, AMC, Alamo Drafthouse have all come out and said they're not opening on Friday. It may be a week or two weeks, even said it may be sometime in the summer before they open. They wanna ensure safety for not only the public, but for their employees as well. You know, big news for Trophy Club is golf courses are now open. So Trophy Club Country Club can not resume their normal operations, but doing far much more than what they were currently. You know, they can adjust their tee times, they can use cart multiple times, provided that it's sanitized. They'll be able to have the 25% occupancy as far as meals, but there's still things that will be required as far as social distancing, and that's the big issue here. You know, another item that has come up is outdoor sports. We've had some baseball associations say, "Hey, we think we can play baseball and maintain social distancing." Well, that's gonna be a real challenge, and you know, baseball does have contact. And the governor's order specifically stated outdoors should be for four individuals or less. So come Friday, we'll be opening up tennis courts, and that would be for tennis and pickleball. You know, we're also looking at opening up on Friday disc golf, and we've also gotten quite a few questions and comments about the batting cages. So on Friday, the batting cages will also be open. But there's still no swimming. And I know there's a lot of, you know, interest in opening up the swimming pools. We're working on some strategies to achieve that. That's probably gonna be somewhere in the midsummer is kind of what we're expecting. But at the end of the day, it's gonna be a slow process. There's a lot of questions that people are being asked that the governor's order did not specifically address. Summer day camps. He pretty much fell silent on that and stated that we're still working on that, and we'll get back to you as soon as we can. So I know there's a lot of parents out there that are eagerly awaiting our decision, but again, I think that's gonna be a real challenge. You know, the school's gonna have to allow us to use their facilities. We've got, you know, field trips planned, and also maintaining social distance with young children sometimes could be a little bit of a challenge. But again, we're hearing a lot of, you know, I guess, questions and comments. We're being asked about playgrounds, you know, can we go to the playground? Well, that was silent from the governor's office, so we're gonna look at discussions with County to see what their interpretation is. Some are feeling that if the governor was silent on it, then that means it's okay, and it's not prohibited. I don't think we necessarily agree with that. Same thing with dog parks. The governor was silent on dog parks. But if you look at the CDC recommendations, it makes it very clear that they do not recommend opening dog parks. They've in fact talked about keeping dogs away from each other and doing social distancing with dogs and their owners of 6 feet. So it's gonna take a couple of days for a lot of cities to work through some of these requirements. But it is, you know, I wanna emphasize that the governor's order supersedes anything at the local level, whether it's more restrictive or less restrictive. The governor's order is law, that is state law, so we're gonna abide by that. This is not a requirement. You know, as far as if people don't feel safe going out, they have their right to stay at home. But you know, it's gonna be an adjustment for the businesses. You know, we had a Zoom meeting this morning with our local hoteliers, and you know, they're challenged deeply, and they're really probably one of the safest places when you think of COVID. But there's nobody traveling, there's no businesses, there's no conferences being held, there's no sports tournaments. So you know, they're looking at their operations from top to bottom. They're even shutting floors down just to minimize any costs that they have. So again, you know, we're gonna need a few days to kind of decipher what all this means, but May 1 will start, and then hopefully people will still, you know, wear masks. It is not mandated that everybody has to wear a mask, but it is highly encouraged and strongly suggested that you do wear a mask. So if we can keep the numbers from spiking again, I think Phase 2 is pretty much a reality. If not, I think you're gonna see things get pushed back. So you know, just a lot of questions out there, a lot of, I think, uncertainty, but you know, we'll figure it out and get through it, and it's new for all of us. So people have been very patient, have been very kind, and you know, understanding that, you know, this is a new order for all of us. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. I would just like to say that I tried to contact all of our restaurants today. I did not get all of them. I can tell you that Meet You Anywhere is going to open to the 25% rule tomorrow. HG is not gonna open till the 9th is their plans at this point. And Christina's, the manager, was in a meeting where they were discussing it when I called. So Fish and Knife didn't seem to know anything about the fact that we had the new executive order, and so he was pleased that I called him about it. And we'll see where all of that goes. As Steve said, we still need to be cautious, we still need to maintain social separation, or the virus will spread faster, and then we will be, I think, hurt worse if all of a sudden the governor says the stay-at-home order is back in effect, and really could affect everybody drastically. So Steve, thanks so much for the report, and Steve and Wade have been very diligent in trying to interface with all the various meetings that we have that seem to be back-to-back or on top of each other to learn about what's going on. So appreciate that, and Jill is right on top of trying to get announcements out there about as fast as we can get them there. So thanks to all of y'all who are making things happen for us. Anybody have any questions about the report? All right, we will then move on to our consent agenda. We have items 2 through 5. Does anybody wish to discuss any of those items and pull them from our consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
All right, Sean Bone approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
I did have a second. All in favor, show your hands, I guess. Is that what y'all are doing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Letty, I guess, did you see all hands? I don't know.
Yes.
It's a new way. It's a challenge, isn't it? All right. We are down to item 6, which is issues of a proclamation of the Town of Trophy Club regarding May 7th as National Day of Prayer. Did we get Irma to join? Is she there yet?
Yes.
So, okay, Irma, we're just gonna get your audio. Is that what's gonna happen?
Yes.
All right.
All right.
So Irma, say something again. You're very faint.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. So Irma, give me just a second. I'm gonna read the proclamation, and then I'm gonna turn the floor over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Proclamation of the Town of Trophy, of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club Texas recognizing May 7th, 2020 as Day of Prayer in Trophy Club, recognizing that 2020 is the 69th consecutive annual observance of the National Day of Prayer and providing an effective date. Whereas public prayer and national days of prayer have been long and significant history in American tradition dating back to the first call to prayer in 1775, when the Convent of Congress asked the colonies to pray for wisdom in forming a nation, and the call to prayer was continued throughout our history, including President Lincoln's proclamation of the Day of Humiliation, Fasting, and Prayer in 1863. And whereas these times of national supplication were made official in 1952, when President Harry Truman signed a joint resolution of the US Congress, which enacted legislation setting aside an annual Day of Prayer for the nation. And in 1988, this law was amended and signed by President Reagan, permanently setting the day as the first Thursday of every May. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is a vital part of our nation's heritage, it enables us to recall and teach the way in which our forefathers sought the wisdom of God when faced with critical decisions, thus reaffirming the spiritual principles upon which this nation was founded. And whereas the National Day of Prayer belongs to all Americans and is the day that transcends differences, bringing together citizens from all backgrounds to honor God and to give Him thanks for the many liberties and blessings we have received, among them the freedom to gather, worship, and pray. And whereas Thursday, May 7th, 2020, is the 69th observance of the National Day of Prayer in our nation, and simultaneously the 28th consecutive observance for the citizens in 76262 community, having as its theme for this year, God's glory across the earth, based upon Beccaric 2:14, where the earth will be filled with the knowledge of the glory of the Lord as the waters cover the sea. And whereas the National Day of Prayer will come together as leaders and citizens in unity as one nation under God to seek His divine guidance, protection, and strength to meet the challenges that we face both present and future, and to pray for peace throughout our nation and world. Now therefore, I, Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of Town of Trophy Club Texas, by the power vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Trophy Club, hereby proclaim Thursday, May 7th, 2020 as the Day of Prayer in Trophy Club to coincide with the National Day of Prayer, and that this proclamation shall take effect from and after this date of passage in accordance with law, and it is so proclaimed. At this time, I would entertain a motion in a second, and then we'll recognize Irma for some comments.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Sean Bone in a second. Irma, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you so much, and good evening, Nick, members of the Town Council and town staff members. And I really wanna thank all of you for officially declaring a Day of Prayer in Trophy Club to coincide with our local observance on May 7th, and for all the years, for many years, that you have acknowledged this important day in our community. We've been doing this for quite some time, for 28 years now, so it's, we've got some history here in our 76262 area. And in the past, you know, we've had many pastors from local churches and community leaders, and you yourself, Mayor, have been faithful to participate for many years. And I can say this, we are certainly going to miss you and hope that in future years, you can come join us regardless of whether you're, you know, Mayor or not. But the proclamation, I think, makes it clear to everybody that this is really a unique and important time for all of us, citizens, you know, in our country, to come together and unify public prayer for our nation and its people. And it couldn't come in a more critical time in our nation when we're experiencing these unprecedented and unsettling times unlike anything we have experienced before, and certainly not in my lifetime. Although I will say this, I lost my grandfather, who of course I never met, in the Spanish Flu pandemic when my dad was four years old. So you know, I'm grateful that the rest of the family survived, and my father lived, you know, and I'm here today for that reason. So lives are touched by this and impacted. But there was never a question about whether we would have this Day of Prayer as we've always had, regardless of current circumstances. We knew we would figure out a way, because there's no doubt that the need is urgent and very great right now for us to seek Almighty God right now for His strength, His guidance, and peace. And I believe that it's also time to infuse our prayers with the message of love one another, as the Lord would have us do in view of the current discord in our nation today. But I am a representative of the National Day of Prayer Task Force, and it has always been our role to promote and mobilize prayers across the nation for the seven centers of influence in our country, for our governmental leaders at all levels, our first responders, the media, business, education, the church, and the family. And of course, it's not just on the first Thursday of every year that we exist, you know, to promote it, but to also encourage prayer in our own individual lives year-round as well. Well, this year's observance is not gonna be like anything we've had in the past because of the social distancing requirements in place. In past years, of course, we've had an observance open to the public, and the majority of those years, we were at the clock tower. This year, we will have a live stream observance on Facebook without a public audience for the first time. So this is uncharted territory for me, for sure. The detailed information is posted on the town's meeting calendar, and we invite each of you to join us virtually on Thursday, May 7th, at 12 noon. All you have to do is go search on Facebook for National Day of Prayer 76262. And I wanna say this, speaking for our local team and all the area pastors, you know, we care about our town, its people, and you are in our leadership, as our leadership. And we count it a privilege, not only to hold up our nation in prayer, but to intercede for our hometown too. And I want you to know, Mayor Sanders, the pastors and the leadership staffs from the area churches and Trophy Club, Roanoke, and Westlake, all united faithfully in earnest prayers for you and your wife Linda and your son Wade from the very moment they heard of your health needs. I want you to know that every single pastor in our fellowship of churches here expressed deep sorrow for the loss of your son, Mayor Sanders, and they are continuing to pray for you and Linda and your son's family. This is what I believe community is all about, caring and praying for one another. And so that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for giving me this time tonight.
Nick, you're muted.
I think you're still muted.
Hello?
I was trying to reduce some of the background noise. I think Wade and Sean are not muted. So Irma, I don't know if you, I think you're still there. If you can hear me, thank you very much for coming once again and addressing the council and for doing all the work to organize this. It will be a memorable day when we do this live streaming activity with just a limited number of people gathered. So thanks to everybody for making that possible. So we do have a motion in a second. I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the proclamation, show your hands. Our thumbs, in the case of Carl. Thank you, Carl. You did show your hand, but it was a thumb up, wasn't it? Okay. All right, motion does carry. Item 7, Directional Parking Recourse Board: Interviews Timeline and Make Up an Appointment Subcommittee. So for council, for several years, we have used a subcommittee of council members to do the interviews of applicants as they apply for our various boards and commissions. With the absence of one seat at this point, currently Philip Schaffner and myself serve on that committee. And so if it is your wish that you could decide among yourselves who among you would like to serve on that appointments committee so that when we do open up to receive applications, you would be part of the team that does the interviews and makes recommendations to council. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint someone to that interview subcommittee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Michael Girassi.
All right, I have a motion to appoint Michael. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second it. Okay.
All right, Carl seconded. All right, any discussion?
I'm willing to help out too, Michael, if you depend on your schedule.
Carl, I appreciate that. We do, we like to have an extra person because there are times that we can't make it, and so having someone designated will be great. All right, so all in favor of appointing Michael to serve on this committee, subcommittee, please show your hands. All right, it's unanimous, Letty, you saw that. All right, so the next thing to kind of discuss is, as you may know, we have an absent position on the parking recs board. We do have a number of applications. Um, we do have a number of applications, I think most of which were left over, previously from when we had applications open. However, I think we also opened it for a period of time. Somebody help me if that's incorrect.
That's correct.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so we opened it for a while. I think we have 11 people who have applied. And so, uh, I have placed this on the agendas for you to discuss and give guidance to us. Do you want to try to go ahead and make an appointment of that one open seat? Uh, or wait till our May timeframe when we would do appointments? They, the park boards is in the process of waiting for staff to, um, help make some recommendations or some research ideas about more pickleball courts is the major topic at this point. Is that right, Tony? You'll have to unmute to talk. There you go.
That's correct. Yes, good evening. That's correct, Mayor. That was, that was on an agenda for the last meeting, which was canceled in March.
All right. So what are your wishes, council? What would you like to see us do?
I think it makes sense for us, for us to schedule, um, interviews and begin the process. I mean, we've got Zoom set up. We could easily, you know, set that up, start interviewing the applicants and at least, you know, come up with a couple for us to figure out who we want to appoint.
All right. So, uh, let, does anybody disagree with that suggestion?
Well, I don't see the need to appoint somebody right away if the, if we're just weeks away from the regular process anyway.
Uh, yeah, we probably are not too far away from doing that. Uh, we, we had, uh, we had applications open for the parking recs board for some time. You have 11 and there's only one seat unless someone, I don't know if everybody on the board that has a position coming up reapply. Do we know, Letty?
Lot. We have various applications that I provided and there, there are 11. As far as re-appointments, we haven't, uh, advertised, uh, re-appointments yet.
Anybody else have a comment about that? All right. So without objection, the suggestion is, uh, begin looking at the interview process for those that we have for parking recs, uh, and we'll make a plan, uh, Letty, to how we're going to get the word out to open up our boards and commissions, uh, applications at the appropriate time.
Okay.
And Nick, is that, am I correct in thinking that the appointment timeframe is August? Is that right?
Well, I thought it was May timeframe, but I'm sorry if I'm wrong.
I don't know why I was thinking it was August, but I think it was. But it'd be nice to know. Maybe we can get a clarification on that later this week.
Yep. All right. Thank you, Sean. We'll get some of that researched and, and go from there. Uh, all right. So we have finished our regular agenda and we do have the opportunity for an executive session if you have any reason to do that. I do not have any reason to take us into executive session. Do any of you want to request that? Hearing no one seeking the floor, uh, we will then not go into executive session. And it is, uh, depending on the clock on my computer, it is 7:34 and we are adjourned.